And Iris Salters, I know is coming up, and I think Kat's going to do the formal introduction here. Thank you for being here today, Iris.
Well, we're very fortunate to have presidents of both the AFT and the Michigan Education Association here. And Iris Salters has been an outstanding president of the MEA, and we know that they have many ideas on the situation as well. And they represent both teachers and support staff, and as does the AFT. And these are the people that work in the schools every day, and you have lots of knowledge of what actually goes on. So, we're eager to hear your views as well, Iris. So, welcome, and the floor is yours, Iris Salters.
Well, thank you for allowing me to have this time. I also have prepared remarks. My staff realizes that I tend to birdwalk if they don't have it written down for me, but I also will make this available on email to you after this meeting. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you today and to share ideas about the kinds of reforms that will truly benefit Michigan students. Like you, the 155,000 active and retired members of the Michigan Education Association care deeply about the future of our schools. We believe that every student in Michigan deserves a great public education, and we have a vested interest in ensuring that our schools excel and providing that in a sustainable way for generations to come. We understand that the State Board of Education must be a standard bearer for public education in Michigan. But that is not your only role that you need to play to ensure that we have that great public school for every child. You must also be a cheerleader for what works in Michigan schools. You must stand up and recognize the innovations and methods, as well as programs, that we know make a positive difference in our students' lives. You must urge collaboration and the sharing of ideas so that struggling schools can turn themselves around. And you must demand that education become a priority for our legislature so that our state can do the same. Many of the so-called reforms that have been proposed and supported by the Michigan Department of Education fail to acknowledge any of the things that we know work in public schools. Instead, they rely on politicians making educational policy based on the rhetoric rather than the research. These measures spend money on things that do not benefit the children sitting in the desks in the schools across Michigan, and that is not something we can afford to do. You are the educational leaders of our state, and if you are truly to demonstrate that leadership, you must push for things like smaller class sizes, early childhood education, quality professional development, and programs that target students at risk of dropping out. Things that we know work and also have been shown to save money in the long run. Instead of chasing after money tied to unproven political whims, you must insist that our children are more than just a test score, that their value and their achievements are more than the MEAP could ever measure. Now, make no mistake, the Michigan Education Association understands the need for reforms. We believe that Michigan's fiscal house must be put in order in order to ensure that our schools have adequate, equitable, and stable funding. MEA, like the AFT, is one of the more than 30 groups who are part of the Better Michigan Future, a coalition advocating for balanced solutions to our state budget crisis. We fully support the coalition's comeback plan, which calls for the important steps our state can take to put our house in order. These include auditing $16 billion worth of government contracts for efficiency, eliminating tax loopholes, and incentives that don't create jobs, expanding the sales tax to cover services and luxury items, and implementing a graduated income tax that would cut taxes for 90 percent of Michigan families. Our legislature works to hold schools accountable for the money they spend, but it demands no accountability from state contractors for the services they deliver, even though they receive more funds than all public schools combined. What's worse, the state of Michigan hands out billions of tax incentives without requiring any proof that they stimulate our economy. MEA has been a leader calling for the elimination of ineffective tax incentives, recently commissioning research by the Anderson Economic Group that found several of the Michigan business tax incentives are costing the state jobs and revenue. On a local level, we believe that fiscal responsibility is necessary in our school districts as well. But that fiscal responsibility cannot mean that school districts shortchange today's students in favor of tomorrow's. Across this state, districts are sitting on $1.6 billion in unspent school aid dollars, stocking them away in fund equities that do no good for students in their classrooms right now. We believe that the money allocated to the districts each year is a contract, to use it to provide the best program for students, not to hoard the money. Since the state finds itself in such a crisis, we believe our elected leaders should demand that schools use it or lose it. This is not a permanent fix for our broken school funding system, but it would go a long way toward filling the hole. As schools have done for the past decade, we must continue to find ways to be more efficient as possible without harming the education of Michigan students. But we cannot assume that every idea for cost-cutting actually saves money over the long term without some careful analysis, particularly to ensure that those actions won't adversely impact students. And we must scrutinize how school districts spend the resources they have to ensure we are spending as much as we can on the instruction of students. On the retirement front, we support ending the abuse of our state's retirement system through double dipping, where administrators and others retire from the school only to return as a consultant, drawing both a pension and a salary, with no further contribution on the part of the individual or of the district. But before we call on school employees to pay more than they already are into the pension, we must examine the history and the reality of the system. Of the approximately 20 percent of payroll that school districts put into the retirement system, which was a little less this year, less than 4 percent actually goes to pensions. The rest pays for the bad state bureaucratic decisions, including poor investment performance and a mid-90s raid on the retiree health funds to pay for tax breaks. We must take steps to fix these problems that are not the fault of the school districts or their employees. We also believe that the promise of Proposal A must be restored so that schools do not have to live with a financial uncertainty of the past few years. Fixing our broken funding system for public education should be job one of the legislature. Inglis-era tax breaks have starved Proposal A of billions in funds that should have gone to public schools. While Michigan could afford these generous tax breaks in the past, we simply cannot anymore. In addition to those huge losses, the consistent partisan debates over state finances have made budgeting almost impossible for school districts. One of the reasons administrators will point to for why they have the $1.6 billion in the bank. We must reduce the financial uncertainty of schools so that they don't face that anymore and they can depend on a stable funding source. Of the many ways we can achieve that goal, MEA urges your support of requiring the legislature to pass the K-12 school aid budget before school districts must approve their own balanced budgets at the start of their fiscal years in July. But even with a more stable financial situation for schools, we will still be in tight budget times for years to come. That is why we must be vigilant, that we use our dollars to make meaningful investments in our students and in our states. We believe in putting our reform efforts into what we know works: early childhood education, individualized attention through reduced class size, and programs and support for struggling students. MEA was proud to be a partner in the development of the AT-RIS program that spawned the superintendent's dropout challenge, and will continue to advocate for the resources necessary to see such programs available across our state. Unfortunately, none of these proven reforms seem to play a significant role in the state's Race to the Top application. Instead, many of the reforms passed in the name of Race to the Top center on school and teacher accountability. We understand the need for measured progress, but it cannot come at the expense of our children's education. Our schools must prepare students for their future by teaching good problem-solving skills and instilling in students a spirit of entrepreneurship and lifelong learning. We cannot sacrifice our students' well-rounded educations that build those critical life skills in favor of rote memorization and teaching to the test. To this end, we must build better assessments that go further than the MEAP and other standardized tests in measuring problem-solving, creativity, and other critical learning skills which students will need to be successful in Michigan's 21st century workforce. And finally, while we're talking about Race to the Top, our association has been raked over the coals for the past week, accused of sabotaging Michigan's efforts. We've been blamed for Michigan not being a finalist. Members of this board, MEA did nothing more than stand up for students and school employees across the state. We asked the kinds of questions that needed to be asked, and we expressed the same concerns many of you had when answers were not forthcoming. And we were not alone. Was anyone listening to the dozens of local school boards and superintendents who refused to sign off? President Obama was crystal clear. Race to the Top was supposed to be about collaboration, bringing together the educational community to do what's best for our children. But Michigan's application was the furthest thing possible from collaboration or a sense of professional community and respect. Nowhere was there more evidence than the fact that we were asked to sign off on the final application without even the basic courtesy of being allowed to see it. President Strauss, you yourself had reservations about signing this contract sight unseen because you were raised by an attorney. Well, I'm no lawyer, but I know better than to sign my name without seeing the fine print or recommending that others do so. In fact, I first saw the final application was when it was posted on the Internet after it had gone into Washington. That was after we'd been told that our participation was optional because we had the audacity to ask that we get to read what we were signing on to. It's pretty clear, this wasn't a collaborative process. If it was, the concerns of thousands of school employees would not have been ignored. Because while politicians and pundits have criticized MEA, I have not heard a single member who thought that the state's Race to the Top plan was a good idea for them or for their students. Michigan's Race to the Top application was a disservice to Michigan students, to Michigan's educators, and to Michigan schools. But we can fix this. We can work together and embrace educational reforms that is based on research instead of rhetoric. We can fix our school funding system so that we don't need $400 million in one-time money from Washington to help each one of us reach the students and give them the opportunity to reach the top. I and the MEA's 155,000 active and retired members share the goal of providing a great education for every Michigan student, and we welcome the opportunity to collaborate on how we reach that outcome. But we call on you to now demonstrate your leadership, insist that the Department of Education put its efforts into reforms that are proven to work and not overstep the direction given by recent reform legislation in the name of political expediency. Demand that the state legislature fulfill the promise of the quality education for every Michigan student with adequate resources for our public school, and embrace your role as the foremost advocates for Michigan's public schools and the great things that are happening in them every day. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Before we go to questions, I'm going to exercise my right as chair of the board to, at least since we got off-target a little bit here, to say how I think we can get back on track for Race to the Top, if you even want to agree that we weren't on track. One is that I will not, I speak for myself here, but I will not repeat what I think happened the final weekend, which is that the governor's education adviser met with you and the FT on a regular basis, asked us to make changes, which we made. That's not an appropriate way to do it, and we won't do that again. And secondly, I would ask that, as I said in my earlier remarks today, I would ask that you consider having Lou attend the ed-alliance meetings, which I don't think he has for months, because this is where we, at least I'll speak for myself personally, where we have gotten a lot of those things worked out, we have collaborated. Every other association signed a letter to our prior application. The board president signed it, the governor signed it. And by the way, you know, with some of the inferences, we couldn't put this through as the Department of Ed alone if we wanted to. The governor's a major player, as you know. She had an appropriate role, and I'm not criticizing her role in trying to work in a different way with both you and the FT at the end there. But frankly, it just wasn't conducive for trying to make sure we had the input on a timely basis. And I would have to say on behalf of my staff that worked till 2 o'clock in the morning every night for weeks prior to that particular submission, that this in large part was because of rules and other things that changed from the Fed's requirements right up to the last minute. And in the final analysis, the other thing is, this is a plan. This wasn't signing a mortgage or a contract, and every district had the right to exclude itself from that plan if and when we got the money. They still will have that opportunity. But Iris, I like you as a person. My daughter's an EA member. I read your, she sends me a lot of the things that come from the EA, and most of them, I think, are exceptional and help teachers get better at what they do. Occasionally, I'm pained by what I read, but I just want to get on record that I think the way we can do this a better time, and we'll look at our own process. We have some issues that we have to deal with ourselves, probably in the way that we have the Oversight Committee structured and things of that nature. But I think the one thing I just have to get on the table is that I can't tell you from me as state superintendent being comfortable signing. Only one signing, you know, two other people had to be comfortable. What made me the most comfortable was my monthly interaction, including yesterday afternoon, with the Education Alliance, which represents all of the educational organizations in this state, and I can't do that with the EA if you're not in attendance. So, I would ask you to consider that, and then we'll also work and take your suggestions to try to improve our process, too. But please, let's...
Well, first of all, I want to thank you, Iris, for being here and for expressing your views so honestly and articulately. So, I think my colleagues usually ask the questions first, and then I sort of come at the end.
Okay. Reggie, please.
I too want to thank you for coming in and for your offer to work collaboratively with the department going forward on Race to the Top. I say that knowing that, from my perspective, we had a lot of people who were acting in good faith, working extremely hard to try to put together a competitive Race to the Top application. And I start with the premise that everybody who is in this debate is acting in good faith for the right motives, and that occasionally we will disagree about substantive issues. But I would, I'm hopeful that the dialogue that goes forward publicly and privately will acknowledge the good faith that everybody brings to the table and the fact that we are trying to do the right thing. All of us are trying to do the right thing. I have, I've read some of the comments from some of your staff and some of your writing on the Race to the Top application criticizing it as failing to provide reform that would benefit students in the classroom, but I haven't heard the specific issues that you feel are not addressed in the application or that are in there that would be detrimental to students and teachers. And so, I think it would be helpful just to kind of get those out on the table so we can talk about them and hopefully try to address them.
Well, I mentioned some of them in here. The whole idea of pre-K is extremely problematic for me. The way we are going in this state and moving back from that, I think, is a disservice to the future. And I know that I'm talking to the choir because I know that around this table, you all believe in pre-K education, okay? But you realize that when money gets tight and people have to look at cutting because it is not, as David said, mandated, including kindergarten, then that's one of the things that people tend to pull back on. So, those kinds of things. We know that the dropout issue, as we know it here in this state, is deplorable. And what I see us doing in our quest to get more efficient, we are adding to class sizes, we have districts in this state that I hear have class sizes of 35 to 40, not enough stations to put the students in, and those are the kinds of things that are not going to bode well for us going forward into the future.
All right, you just threw me off there. Thank you. Thank you, Iris, for coming and sharing your thoughtful comments with us. I'm going to move past Race to the Top for a second and talk about something that you mentioned in your remarks. You talked about the fund balances that schools have and the $1.6 billion that's left in the fund balances. We heard last time, and I can't remember which of the...
Mike Adenizio.
Thank you. That with the types of cuts and additional funds that need to go into the pension and the healthcare, that, you know, chances are we're looking at about $400 per student, and that, and forgive me if I'm misquoting this, but roughly 80 percent of the schools that will basically eat up their fund balance. My question to you is, do you agree with that, or do you guys have additional concerns with those fund balances and you think that, well, I'm not going to put words into your mouth. Let me just ask the question. Do you agree with what he said?
Well, there are some schools that are having to use up more of their fund balances at this time. You know, we had about 30 schools in, that were, didn't have balanced budgets last year, and that I'm sure will increase. But it's an interesting thing because a lot of that money is in certain pockets. And I'll be very truthful with you, a lot of our ISDs are holding them.
Yeah, that's what it is.
And that, to me, speaks to the disproportionate way we give money, okay? And that they are allowed to hold that kind of money. And what I'm saying is, if it's two districts or it's 150 districts, then I believe you ought to save some for a rainy day. I do believe that you got to have a saving, just like every household. I tell my children they must have an emergency fund, instead of me. But I do believe there's a point where it gets beyond that emergency fund and it gets to just hoarding money. And I don't think that should be allowed in this tight economy. I do believe, and I say this all the time, there is a contract between the districts and the state, and that's to provide the best education we possibly can provide for the students. And you can't do that. You can't tell me that where they're hoarding some of these, they could not put more of those resources into educating their students.
Good point on the fund equity. Thank you. Other, Liz, please.
Also, you said among your things, and thank you for being here, about ending the double dipping. And that brought to mind the thought that I've had for a long time around education. In the business world, they had come up with the Retired Executive Service Corps, and I know when I've started organizations and corporations and stuff, they've been marvelously helpful volunteers. I was wondering if your membership have ever talked about a Retired Educators Service Corps that would volunteer in schools, in communities as added resource. It wouldn't be double dipping because it would be volunteer. But has that ever had any kinds of discussions? Maybe, I don't want to put you on the spot, actually, but it's a thought I had.
Well, I think there's a difference between what a volunteer does and what a paid employee does, okay? But we have, I'd say probably 75 to 80 percent of our retired staff do just that. Come back into schools, they do some subbing, some of them do work with actual students on a regular basis, mentors for teachers. I mean, there's a lot of volunteerism that goes on. They say once you are a school employee, you have trouble giving it up when retirement comes around.
I was just thinking in terms of professional development, you could have squads of retired educators that could descend to assist people with professional learning. It's something that's in my mind, but I just know that the Retired Executive Service Corps was just absolutely phenomenal resource to me when I was trying to help people learn to become executive directors of new nonprofit organizations, and their guidance was terrific. So, it's just a thought, yeah.
Other board members, John, please.
Just appreciate, President Salters, your comments and your coming here. On the Race to the Top topic, I guess my only observation was if one test for us as a state, whether we have come together to seriously collaborate on serious change in reforms, we still have some work to do to come together to collaborate on those reforms. And I hope everyone here is serious about redoubling our efforts to move and come together and work together on this moving forward. You heard John Bebo talk, and I referenced this notion that there is the need, whether we get it this year or some year, for some sort of grand compromise or grand bargain, which, you know, at its simplest is, in return for some public, asking the public to be willing to support the kind of increased investment in it, pre-K and K-12 and higher ed, that may be very important and needed, that we need to be, in return for that, demonstrating intelligibly that we're serious about leading every efficiency, cost-saving, you know, reform, running education, smarter, better, cheaper, and being willing to embrace a lot of continued changes in that. And I guess my question for you all, President Salters, is that a general proposition that you all embrace, that we need to do both of those things? Or what's your sort of sense of whether that kind of bargain, in return for stability and new revenues to pay for education, we need to be showing additional steps to save more money on this side?
Well, let me say, I believe in smarter and I believe in better. Sometimes it is cheaper, sometimes it is not cheaper. I can't say what that would be. But I think we need to be looking at all the efficiencies that we possibly can in education with the goal in mind that we need to do things that are going to be productive to the increased learning of our students, okay? And there are a lot of things that we could say would be cheaper. It would be cheaper to put 90 kids in a classroom with one teacher, but we're not going to do that, okay? Because we know that is not effective for the learning process. Because we know that is not effective for the learning process.
Any other questions or comments from board?
I don't know if Mary Ann or Nancy-
Mary Ann, Nance?
No.
Yes, I had a, something I wanted to say. First of all, thank you so much, Iris, for coming and for giving such an informative talk. I was wondering if we could get a copy of the study that you performed on possible ways of saving money?
Now, are you talking about the research that we commissioned?
The Anderson Group.
You certainly may.
Okay.
That was unveiled, the second part of it was unveiled last week. And so, we will have that and I'll see that, that is emailed to you, all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Nancy, did you have anything?
Not at this moment.
Okay. Any other board members?
Well, I just, I want to thank you again, Iris, and we want to, we want to, we want to do our jobs as part of, that's why we're doing what we're doing. Providing, we want to provide some leadership on this and do it in a bipartisan fashion, model it for the legislature and for the, for the population of the state, that we can come to agreement on something constructive that's bipartisan. And we're hoping to be able to do that. And your contribution is very valuable. We're very appreciative of your-
Well, let me say thank you as well. We don't get enough of these opportunities, and I think on both sides, we need to make sure that we have more ongoing communication with each other, and we welcome that.
Thanks so much for taking the time, Iris.
Thank you.
Welcome back anytime. President suggested five-minute break here, so let's do that. What, what we're going to do, and, well, I guess, I don't know if I need to do that or not, but consider it done. And we, we're honored to have two other folks with us that President Strauss is going to, Kathy's going to introduce, and we're going to work with, with these two enlightened folks to help us understand issues from their point of view, and then we'll probably break for a bit, as I understand it from-
No, I think, yes, okay.
Well, let's, we'll play it by ear.
Well, we want to welcome you to the table. The Consensus for Change is a group that's been meeting for about a year, I guess, and Liz Bauer on our board has been part of it, and I'm going to ask her to introduce you.
So, well, this is my pleasure to welcome Marcia Miles from EdTech and Mike Murray, who is the superintendent of Sutton Bay Area Schools. And Marcia, I think, I don't know if you're the instigator of the think tank, because I kind of came in after it was going for a little while, and I know members of the department have been involved, and John Van Wagenen from our department has been a pretty regular attendee. But this group of educators, and some are ISD people, some are local education agency people, State Department people, business people, all over, and we've really, in those meetings, tried to think of real, out-of-the-box solutions. And so, it's my pleasure that, to have you here at the table today. And I think we're going to hear from Mike, and we're going to, I think, also hear some suggestions for change that we have not yet heard from all of our other experts. So, welcome, and it's all yours.
Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. I'm going to just start out briefly by telling you that I am, in fact, the instigator of the think tank. And just to give you a, a quick snapshot, through my work with EdTech, I have conversations with a lot of people, superintendents, Department of Ed, business leaders, teachers, just various people from different sectors who share their ideas with me. And as a result of that, two things became very clear. One was that we've got a lot of really fabulous, innovative, dedicated, committed people who really want to make a difference in education and have very innovative ideas. But secondly, it became very apparent that there are obstacles or barriers in the way that make it kind of difficult, more than difficult sometimes, sometimes impossible to implement these ideas. So, I had this idea to try to bring together some of these people, to kind of create a point of intersection where we could have conversations about some of their innovative ideas, define what the barriers are, and then see if we could come up with a, a solution, some ideas that might solve those problems and bring those barriers down. We met three, we've met three times, the Consensus for Change Think Tank has met three times. During that time, we've used a method that is called Listening for Understanding, Not Debate. And through that, we have reached consensus on a proposal that Mike will present to you this morning about the right to innovate. And the only other thing I want to add is that although it's just Mike and I sitting here, we really do represent everyone who has been involved in the think tank, they're right here with us. So, we're speaking as one voice on their behalf.
Thank you, Marcia. And I think a great part of our strength is our diversity, and I'm also proud of the fact that we have students on, on this committee, on this think tank, and it's very important to hear their voices because you'll hear their voices coming through in these proposals. Our Consensus for Change Think Tank wants to take advantage of the upheaval that we're in as a society, as a state, because there's a great opportunity when times like this come along. You know, it's not often that you find all the conditions are just right for change. We're looking at what we're seeing and saying, the time is right to move education into the 21st century. So, I'm going to move from, first of all, the global, some of the background of philosophy, of what we agreed upon, and then down to the specific, because I know that some of you like to get into the very practical and, and specific. But when we met and when we talked from our different backgrounds, part of our title is consensus. Certain ideas came through consistently from all sectors. One of those ideas is one that I heard talked about here this morning. David mentioned it, John mentioned it, the Board of Education here mentioned it, Iris mentioned it, and that's the importance of really childhood. You know, that was, starting right from the beginning, we all came to consensus that really childhood is the place to start. But there are three other consistent themes, and this is the background to what we're going to talk about this morning. First of all, we came to consensus that whether you learn is more important than when or where you learn. And so, that's, that's a foundation thought for the think tank.
Did you say whether, what?
Whether you learn is what, what we're all about. Because we've defined where students should learn and when they should learn, and what we found is for many students, they did not learn. And we're saying, whether you learn, that's what's really important. The rest of it doesn't matter. Number two, the school must fit the individual. We've spent way too much time trying to fit individuals into the school. It has to be the other way around. Now, the superintendents represented in this think tank, most of us have seat time waivers, and we've learned a great deal from seat time waivers. We've learned from talking to the students who are in seat time waivers, and they have shown us what has happened in, in the past. It's, it's been amazing to me, part of, part of my learning experience is interviewing these students who are in our virtual schools from the seat time waivers, because these are kids who are very, very motivated to learn, who have, for the most part, dropped out of school but not given up on learning. And there were certain of, of the kids who came in who wanted to learn that I expected, the young mothers with their families, that they didn't want to leave their babies and the school schedule didn't fit them, some of the homeless kids who had to work during the day, that they're looking for a chance to further their education. But then we started seeing that there were other types of learners who were out there. Learners who said, I want to really go into a subject and, and study it deeply and immerse myself in it for a while, and then when I'm through with that, then I want to move on. And for the most part, these are very bright students. We've, we've run across students, and this was a big surprise to me, because even though I've looked at all the statistics and I've worked in education for close to forty years, and I knew our special education students did not have a great success rate in school, students who, in spite of all the support they've had in school, the number of special education students who had been dropouts, who came back and said, I want to learn, has been just inspiring to me. Because for the most part, what they're saying is, you know, the classroom just doesn't work for me. I, I might be sitting here and suddenly my attention wanders, something catches my, my attention, and because I wandered off and the class has moved on, when I come back, there's no way for me to pick up. But with technology, with virtual learning, with, with opportunity like this, when I can bring my focus back, I can go back to where I was before and I can pick up and I can learn. Or if I hear it once and it doesn't quite click, I can go back and look at it, or hear it, or see it another time. And they are saying, I would not go back into a classroom, but I do want to learn. Some of these kids, they start their schooling at ten PM and they finish up at two, three in the morning. It, it just fits their, their learning style. They say, online learning, I don't have to worry about the other kids laughing at me. So, the seat time waivers has taught, have taught us a lot about what needs to happen in, in schools, and it really comes back to, we need to take a look at the individuals. Many of these special education students, I'm finding, are not learning impaired. It was the school that never fit them, and once you match the school to them, they take right off. The third component is that what we teach kids, what we want them to learn in school has to change. The emphasis in the past, we've spent far much, too much time in school trying to transmit knowledge and information from the teacher to the student. Going back to the Prairie Schools where the, the students didn't have books, and so they had to learn from memorization to the, from the board, to the, the immigrants who came in at the beginning of the 20th century, and we needed them to learn English and a work ethic. And so, we took information and we put it together into books because it was one, a good place to put things in one spot. The information that we wanted students to learn, we tested them on, and it was fairly easy to test them on it. But information was, was still rather scarce. I don't know how many of you shared the experience that I had in going through school, when it was time for a term paper and we had a, a topic, there was a great rush to the library because there were only two or three books that were going to be on your topic in that library. If you weren't the first one to get them, you didn't have the, the required three books. And the teachers required you to have at least three different sources because they wanted you to not just take and copy something from one book. And so, the, the rush was on to get that information and to put it together. And so, because we spent all of our time trying to make sure that the students had the knowledge base, had the content base, that information base, we never got to the good part. We never got to the point where you, what you did with that knowledge became important. But students today, you know, when we had the, the two-month-old baby here, I looked to see whether the baby was texting yet. They start very early with information, and the, the challenge now is not to find the information, but how to sort through it, how to analyze it, how to synthesize it, how to apply it, how to take it and to produce something with it, to do something in collaboration with others, to come up with a product. And so, what we're trying to do with students is really change, and I think that means a change in the role of teachers. Teachers would, in the past, would present information, work with students to try to get and gather that information, then send them home to work on it at home, and when they come back the next day, try to make sure that they didn't go, get off track on the accuracy of the information, and try to instill that. But it didn't stay in the, in the long-term memory. It at best got into working memory and then disappeared after the, the next test. What we can do now is we can count on students to be able to access that information at home the night before, and when they come into the school, when they come into the social place, we can start guiding them into, this is how you sort out the importance of what you're doing. This is how you analyze and, and judge the quality of the information you've got. This is what you can do with it. This is how you can put this together. Let's get you lined up and, and working on something where you're actually utilizing this. Because kids today don't want to just passively take in, information. They want to do something with it. The kids who are coming up into our schools now are radically different from the school, from the kids of ten years ago or twenty years ago. I'm even seeing a huge difference in our high school students to the middle school students, to the upper elementary students. They learn far differently. You know, the, the digital natives come in and they want to experiment, they want to play with things, they want to try things out, they want to bounce ideas off of each other. They don't want to just sit there and, and get things. So, we've learned a lot. Now comes the time to what we're going to do with it. The, the seat time waiver was a good start, but this is our pupil accounting manual, and the seat time waiver waives parts of that. Problem is that it's just tinkering around the edges. Our think tank says that it's time to be bold, taking the lead of Superintendent Flanagan. We need to be bold in our thinking, and what I'm going to present today to you is the result of that thinking where we're saying, it's time to stop tinkering. You know, those of us who are, are working with seat time waivers are also seeing that we're being punished for trying to do the right thing. That, still, the basis of this is that having students present in a location for a certain period of time is the basis for our funding, is the basis for how you judge if a school is doing its job. I currently have five out of six students who are in my virtual school that I get no funds for. And probably to do the prudent fiscal thing, I should have said to them, you know, just it's after-count day, wait till next year, come back and see us when we can get funding for what you do. That's not what we're all about. We're about educating students, and so, it, it's time to start making the basis for what we do with students proficiency and not how long that they've been with us. So, changing the role of teacher, changing the way we, we look at students. We sat down and said, how do we take all of these global ideas and bring them down to a practical level? How do we go to what exactly the barriers are and recommend some changes to allow schools to move forward? How do we get to the, the point where school is not a place, but an activity? And so, that's where we started taking a look at what is in place now, because we know that change usually doesn't happen in bold steps, it happens in, in logical, sequential small steps. So, starting out with the pieces that are in place, we know that there is an opportunity to run pilot programs. And pilot programs are prohibited subjects of bargaining and give a, a school district an opportunity to do something. Problem is, we've never defined how long a, a pilot program is. We know that working in schools to change a school culture takes approximately seven years. After seven years, you, you get people on board, ideas, it, it becomes now the status quo. And so, one of the, the first proposals we have is to grant schools in this right to innovate project, the opportunity to set up seven-year pilots. In that seven-year pilot, all of the current subjects of, that are not permissible for bargaining would, would take place. Within these pilots, we need to take a look at some alternative compensation and alternative ways of certifying people, because the other piece that we need to take a look at is, as we're looking at 21st century learning skills, as we're taking a look at what our students need, we need to get back to also the idea that our students are going to be out into the community, that they're going to be learning from people in the, the world of business, in the world of, of medicine. And that sometimes, some of the people we need to bring in to work with our students need to be people who aren't necessarily certified teachers. to be people who aren't necessarily certified teachers. If you're taking a look at the skills for the 21st century, then the same skills that were necessary for a classroom teacher aren't necessarily the skills that we need to bring into place for our students for the future. For the pupil accounting manual, the best thing to do would be to just take this and remove it for the people in the Right to Innovate, and say, "We're going to compensate you based upon the students you graduate, the students who reach that level proficiency that we are calling graduation." And I hesitate to use the word "graduate" because people tend to think of that as, "Well, that's the end of grade twelve." It could be that students reach that point when they're fifteen. It could be that they're nineteen. You know, different students learn it different ways. But make what counts if we get students to that level proficiency that we've identified that makes them ready for work or ready for college. Actually, looking at the amount of time that we spend and working and doing reports and doing accountability, based on the idea that if you're not demanding that people follow all the rules, they're probably going to cheat, I'm working from the point of view, and I found this in my experience working with students, that if you look into people and say that there's an intrinsic need in people to improve, an intrinsic need and want to learn, to be better, and you tap into that, you get much more out of them. And so, working with schools that are trying to innovate, I think you get much more out of those schools if you say, "Hold us accountable for one thing and one thing only. Do the students have the skills and competencies that we're defining are necessary for the 21st century?" Not where they get them and when they get them, but whether they get them, that are important. The hours of instruction are still in place and are still pieces that we need to get away from. Someone mentioned before the idea of a year-round school. You know, the students who get turned on to learning don't really care when it happens. I had a special education teacher this last week that said, you know, he received an email three-thirty in the morning on a Sunday morning from one of his kids who suddenly got fired up that weekend and went through six chapters of the history book because he got into the zone and he stayed there and he just worked on it. And because he worked on it, he just kept going and going and going and got excited about it. Those same students would actually work on something through the summer. They don't take vacations. When an idea catches their interest, they would, they'll take that and run with it. Now, they may be working on it ten PM to two AM, which are the favorite times for online learners, but there's no reason why school has to stop in June and then pick up in September, even if students are in the workforce. If opportunities are made available to them online, students can pick up and run with ideas. So, the idea that students should be limited to a certain number of classes they can take at a time is something that's still based upon the old seat time concept. I have students that would take 1.5 FTEU classes because they have the ability and they have the interest and they do that. I also have students for whom organization is a difficult thing, where if we give them one or two classes that they take and they run with for two or three months in a row, and then check off on the assessments that they've learned that, and then they'll move on to two or three more, those are the types of things that we're finding that fit the needs of students that the pupil accounting manual doesn't really address. The lines between college and high school are beginning to blur because learning is really a continuum. That continuum starts in early childhood and just keeps right on moving. And so, one of the pieces that we're looking for in the Right to Innovate is the opportunity to expand the middle, earlier middle college concept. Another piece that I know this isn't a pupil accounting manual that we are dealing with is increasingly, we've got people coming to the public schools from homeschoolers and from non-public schools who say, "You know, the blended instruction idea that you've got really makes a lot of sense to us. We can access a lot of the biology information at home, and then when you open up your labs once a week at night, we, our kids can come in and work in those labs and take advantage of what the taxpayers have provided to do the work. That makes a lot of sense." Currently, they're excluded, and that's something that our think tank would like to take a look at, is all the kids in the state of Michigan are students, and we would like to serve them all. Schools of choice, the pupil accounting manual still, even with the virtual schools, limits us to those students that are within our ISD or contiguous ISD. If place doesn't matter, then really, why should that matter? We've got families right now, because of the economy, who travel. They're with us in our school district, and then they might be out in the state of Washington for two or three months because that's where a construction job is. And then from there, they might go to Arizona for another two months, and then from there to Florida for a month or two, and then back to us. To enroll in all those different schools everywhere is difficult. It makes sense to us to have the relationships, establish that family back in the home school, and then to continue their education as the family moves with the jobs. Number six on the list here is the age of pupils. We currently exclude from high school students who turn twenty before the beginning of their final year of high school. And I can understand the reasoning for that because of the mix of social levels of maturity. But if what you're doing is dealing with students virtually, then maybe some of those pieces disappear. So, that in one of the centers I'm currently working with, where we've turned a drop-in center into a place of learning for students, some of the young mothers come in with their children to work in this wireless environment, and they bring their significant other who never graduated from high school either and would like to learn as a family. What a great opportunity for the two to help each other to get that high school diploma. But yet, because the father is twenty, it's a whole different setup. You know, you have to go to adult education and you're in high school. So, some of these pieces that we're looking at that are still based upon this idea of school being a place, we need to take a look at. The certification issue I just touched on, one of the pieces that is often asked of me when I present some of these ideas is, "So, what are we going to do with all these buildings?" If school is not so much a place anymore, and there will always be that social context that is a big part of learning, so buildings will be centers, but they could become more than just centers of classrooms. They could become community centers. We've begun filling in different community groups into our buildings and turning them into places where families gather, not just students. And so, for instance, last week, we just added our local food pantry comes in and uses part of the building so that now all those families who need services can come in. And if they can come in and they can do the local government services in the building, they can access the food pantry, they can access adult education, if they can access the computers online. The buildings themselves will not go to waste, but we're really thinking in the consensus for change that we need to rethink what schools look like. And in rethinking that, one of the side effects of this is that the cost to educate students will change dramatically. And there are a great number of efficiencies that can be built in, but we think the place to start is to create a pool of people, just like we did with the seat time waivers, that have the right to innovate, that would have the opportunity to operate without some of the restrictions that we have, and put our focus back on proficiency of students, keeping students engaged and moving students toward the 21st century.
Thank you, Mike, and thanks for acknowledging the work of folks here to start with something like the waivers and get our collective juices going and our thinking going. And board members, comments or questions? Liz, did you want to start?
Well, I just want to thank you for this really kind of overview of the work that's gone. And I want to reinforce the notion that some of the barriers to innovation are things that really can be changed. I mean, the pupil accounting manual, I am quite sure, has grown over time as new rule, new thing, add a section. We know that right in it are conflicting requirements, and depending on the auditor, which chapter they're reading, you know, a program can be approved for reimbursement or not. And I think we need to hear what is said about going deep, you know, where students go into a subject and go deep into it to gain comprehension over a period of time and then move to another one, deep into it. But they can't be counted in membership because they're not doing five things for, you know, so many hours. I really appreciate what you are saying about it's not where, you know, it's not a matter of place. It's a matter of performance. It's the outcome. Is the child, student, whatever, able to apply the knowledge that we hope that they are getting in our educational program. So, I just want to reinforce those things and speak with loud voice and commit to our presenters that I'll keep talking about the presentation in the future here at the table. Thank you.
Other, Kath, please, and John?
Well, thank you. I want to thank both of you and your colleagues in the group. I'd be interested to know who the other people are that are in the consensus.
I would be happy to send you a list of the participants. Would you like that?
Yeah, you'd have to tell us today, Mrs. [inaudible].
No, I don't think I could come up with all. There's quite a few. We probably have a list of forty people.
Oh.
So, I'll get that list to you.
Thank you. But what you're bringing up is really a whole new way of thinking about schools and education, and it really, we're talking about increasing the number of days and increasing the length of the school year, and how does all that fit with what you're, you know, with doing virtual schools and online schools? And Liz and I visited one in Westwood that very, that reached out to at-risk kids who had dropped out or were in danger of dropping out, and they just love it. And the thing, I was worried about the lack of personal contact, but they have worked that out, and there's more personal contact apparently in this program than there is in a regular classroom. So, there is, it's a whole new way of thinking, and it's going to really challenge us. So, I'm really glad that you are here to present these ideas because they, it is thinking outside the box.
And Kath, I made your point. One way we're thinking about it in the department right now is we're thinking as if we're changing the wheel on the car while it's moving, and we're saying, we're trying to say to ourselves, and to be open more for these, but on the seat time waiver as an example, we were saying, "It's not contradictory to say that if you're in a traditional model, you need time. You need one hundred and eighty, two hundred days. If you're not in a traditional model, that's how we can go more towards a proficiency-based."
So, we can run parallel.
For now. And then maybe you shift totally to proficiency and mastery-based at some point. I mean, but I think there are other powers to be, talk about collaboration, that would not be on board for this right now, and that we need to press if we believe that this is. This isn't just about a department manual. This is about special interests, frankly, that are concerned about status quo in some cases. So, we need to challenge ourselves with the whole.
It is a challenge. It's a whole new way of thinking. Because I was going to talk about it in my president's report later, but we were at a conference last week called Internationalizing Our Education in Michigan, but the main speaker in the morning was from England and talked about how to engage students. And this whole, the whole presentation was about computers and how kids use computers and online resources. So, it's completely different from our way of thinking. And it does engage that if they are involved in their own education and they really design it to suit their own needs, but the content remains in the hands of the educators. That's how it's delivered.
Thank you. John, please.
And appreciate your innovative thinking. And I'm pushing us, and I want to, I was trying to work through the implications of your approach, and it actually was consistent with some of the notions that I hope we might try to leaven into this set of recommendations on how we finance schools. I mean, as Mike noted, I think you're, when we're hearing earlier this morning, and we're all concerned that kids need more learning, not less, you know, more time learning, the implications of, who cares about the time they learn? Are they mastering the content? And the expectations that we want, you know, is challenging for that. Let's do more time. But I think the full implication of what you're recommending is that we should not fund schools, if a kid shows up on a day, we should fund schools on whether they learn the content. In your terms, graduate, but whether they master the competencies. And so, one idea that, you know, we've talked about, if we really take seriously performance-based funding for schools, we would be interested in figuring out whether some, a bit, or all of the foundation grant is basically awarded, or there's a bonus if the kids learn the content, or some piece of it is rewarded if they master the content. Now, obviously, there's lots of challenges within that. You don't want to reward schools for driving out the kids who can't hit the content, reward the high achievers. You might want to factor in money for grade-level movement. You know, if all the, if your kid moves, if each kid moves where they need to be each year, you get the money, which would be an implication of that. Now, this is obviously, any version of that, even a little piece on top of the foundation grant that rewards whether they actually learn the content, would be a huge change in how we fund our schools. Maybe is where we need to go as a state and a society. But so, maybe a set of school districts where we do fund them based on, I mean, an innovation district where we fund on whether all the kids are either making progress, particularly if they have a long way to travel, if they're making sufficient progress, or they're mastering the content, is the way we should pilot this kind of innovation. I mean, I'm for, I'm not for pilots generally because they never escape being pilots. We just, you know, it's like Saturn, you know, with GM. We set up something that's different and then we ignore it and it never changes the whole system. So, I'm always looking for things that are the right direction for the whole system. But has your group thought about the implications of how we fund schools based on content mastery as the goal, or content mastery progression, you know, growth, and how we might begin to leaven our funding system with how we do that? Not just, you know, throw out the manual and do some pilots, but what are the implications for funding schools based on whether students perform and achieve?
It's a direction that we're very interested in going. And like you say, we don't want some unintended consequences of schools doing the wrong things because of a system set up. I mean, we see that now with the seat time. But that's something, as we take a look, we were talking this morning, so what's our next agenda item? That may very well be the next agenda item for this group.
Great. I'll say Cassandra. I'm going to get off the senator piece for now.
Following up on John's question, you know, one of the concerns that we hear over and over again is that teachers are now in a point right now where they're teaching to the test. And the more the assessments and how they're graded, if you will, is based on, say, the meat test or things like that, then that becomes a bigger and bigger concern. If you have a situation where funding is tied to the assessment, then isn't that perpetuating that same issue? Is it just going to get worse, or are you suggesting different assessments?
I'm suggesting that what we're expecting students to be able to master and what we then assess, that also needs to change because most of the assessments that you're looking
Because most of the assessments that you're looking at right now are based upon content knowledge. And what we're proposing is, it's not just what students know, but what they know how to do with it, which leads to performance-based assessment. And most of the talk within our think tank looks toward a model of learning that really is project-oriented or performance-based.
Would that be a standardized, or would it be each school kind of comes up with their own performance-based assessment?
To a certain extent, I think you have to let each community get involved in coming up with its own types of performance-based assessments, because each community has different opportunities for what students can get engaged in, in that particular area. At the same time, we've found that the Michigan Merit Curriculum has been a mechanism that frees us up to do a lot more creative approaches, because we know what the targets are. The targets aren't changing all the time. And so, having that kind of a structure as a background allows us to be creative in how we're going to do it. You know, when I taught English, if I gave the students a wide-open topic and said, so write on whatever you feel like today, I'd get nothing. But the more specific the directions were, the more creative the writing was, because they knew the framework in which they had to operate. And the same thing is true for the assessments. So I really believe the Michigan Merit Curriculum has been a boon to us as far as taking creative approaches to education.
And I think if I could just build on Mike's comment, that if your assessment is aligned to the Michigan Merit Curriculum, you're really not teaching to the test, you're teaching to the curriculum, and it happens to be measured by that. But other things are to the test, and they're not aligned with the curriculum. That's a different problem. Other board members, comments or questions? Liz, please.
I just wanted to add that many of the members of the consensus for change think tank are having dinner tomorrow night. I know Mrs. Strauss is joining us, Mike Flanagan, Senator Kuyper, Representative Melton are coming, and Kim Ross from, you guys, I don't have his biography here. He's from Minnesota, but he's doing a lot of this kind of innovative stuff in a smaller community in Minnesota, and he's going to be our speaker. But I'm sure, we can always find a seat at the Bob in Grand Rapids for anybody that wants to come over.
Absolutely.
Talk tomorrow night.
Great. Well, thank you so much. This has been excellent. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Beth.
And the other thing, just to add, but I remember in a consensus meeting, that their members were willing to rewrite the pupil accounting manual for the department. I heard downstairs at the meeting, we could hold it to it.
They've actually started. They're working on it.
Actually, that's a great, concrete idea. I mean, at least a proposed.
The people have to live by it, write the book.
Yeah. Well, it'd be much shorter.
It'd be much shorter.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Marsha.
I assume the accounting manual was based on law.
A lot of it is, but.
I mean, most of it is based on law. It's not that they dreamed it up to be restrictive.
Right.
They're trying to figure out how to implement the law and make it work.
Well, they actually have a paper with legal citations that'll tell you what page to, what section of law needs to be amended.
Right.
But I think it's a great, concrete idea, because we may find out with, here's a suggested manual, and then you theoretically inform us, here's the laws that would need to change, here's the things you could do unilaterally as a department. I mean, that would be extremely helpful and would maybe get us closer to that goal. Thanks for your attendance today.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here all this time.
And I don't know if Sabrina, she's coming at 1:00.